Recording in progress.
I got you on speaker, right? Let's not do that. Are you coming? All right, come on, we're waiting on you, because you're gonna start us off. Hurry up. Ladies and gentlemen, we're hosting the study session about the development that's taking place on Ann Arbor Trail. I know that there has been some concern residents, there has been some concerns from the builders and the owners of that land. What I can tell you is, I've had some good conversations this past week about really what's going on, spoken to a lot of the residents. I haven't really gotten a chance to speak with anybody from the development side, but from what it seems like, is there needs to be some type of development. The reality is, everybody has this conception or misconception of, you know, like, you know, if you're going to be building, I'm hearing condos, I'm hearing apartment complexes, maybe a bunch of different ups and downs. So I want to be able to let you guys to come out and maybe put those things, you know, address those residents and explaining what your vision is for the site. And I would also like you to be able to differentiate between the two, is this going to be a condo? Are these going to be apartment complexes? If they are, can you present the city with some type of rendering? Maybe so that we can showcase these. And then I'd also like to hear also from some of our residents, I know our building director is going to be speaking as well. And Mr. Deeb, I know some of the council members are concerning, is just to maybe get some, some things in writing about, is it a wetland or is it not? With the proper engineering, but we would love to actually just hear from you, have the floor. I want to make it very clear that this isn't like a bicker and back and forth. This is going to be a civil discussion. Because at the end of the day, everyone in this room has some type of feelings one way and the others have the opposite way. Or one, and I believe at the end of the day, everybody wants what's best. And I could tell you that this body here right now was torn between the two. But the reality is, what, you know, I can tell you right now, it's not gonna stay an empty field. Like, that's, it's non-negotiable. An empty field is not something, number one, and number two, we also don't want to put ourselves in between finding ourselves like what happened with the car wash where we were put ourselves in a litigation and then the city ends up getting sued and the courts end up, you know, making the determination. We're also not putting ourselves in that position. But what we'd also like is from the developers to understand that whatever it is that you're doing, we want you to be mindful of the residents. Like, we don't want, and I know you guys are residents of Dearborn Heights, what we don't want to see is residents not feel comfortable in where they live, right? And so this is a two-way street. We all, we all have to come together and finding a way to trusting each other. This is not me coming here and just telling you guys what you want to hear, but the truth is, the builders and the investors need to feel trusted, but our residents and our community also wants to feel trusted. And so the misconception of what is it that you're bringing, will it cause any flooding? Is it gonna be overseeing it to somebody's homes? Do you offer some type of rendering? Are these gonna be high-end, low-end? And just kind of, you know, pick the floor from there.
Yeah, more, I mean, I apologize if this, if this is a more of a casual approach to these proceedings. I wasn't aware of the special meeting until just recently, so I apologize if I missed the communication or something along those lines. So I'm not fully prepared with renderings and PowerPoint and all that stuff. I did have it at one time for the planning committee, but it was deemed that it wasn't necessary. And what we didn't want to do, as I mentioned it before, was put the cart in front of the horse, right? I mean, right now, the, the obstacle or the hurdle that's in front of us that we're looking to clear is rezoning. Okay, and of course, the, the concerns of the city, not just from a functional perspective, but from an aesthetics perspective, and from a utilities perspective, and a resource management perspective, those all have to be considered, and I can assure you that that is a priority for us as we look to pursue this development. There's one big item that I want to make sure gets a little bit of attention here. And you brought it up, Councilman Bedun. You, you mentioned the term wetlands, right? And, and that was brought up in the Planning Commission discussion. And that was somebody that was saying, you know, I've reached out to so-and-so and they said such and such. That's verbatim what they said, but that's kind of the gist of what they said.
You're paraphrasing.
The, the, the response to that from Councilman Turfee, the response, and I'm not trying to
Commissioner, not councilman.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize for that, from Commissioner Turfee, was, I looked it up on the Michigan National Wetland Authority. It's a website that I pay for annually because it's not a real estate developer, I'm not, because I'm a real estate developer myself, and it's not wetlands. This is somebody who voted against the rezoning, saying, hey, let's make sure that we use facts here and not just opinions or hearsay. So he's, so the, the, a planning commission member who's against the development has said this is not a wetland property, and he's verified it himself through a paid site. Okay, so I want to make sure that we're, we're discussing facts here, right? Some other key points that I want to make sure that we address is the feasibility of the project, right? And the city has nine conditions, nine criteria that they have to assess in order to determine whether or not they should proceed with rezoning. I'm not an expert, okay? I don't think that anybody in this room is an expert, but there's a person that's responsible within the city who is an expert on that to make the decision on those nine items, and it's Mr. Deeb. And Mr. Deeb wrote, Mr. Deeb wrote in his letter that this does meet all the criteria for the rezoning activities.
And I, I want to pause you real quick, and this was the conversation that I had with Mr. Deeb, and I believe I had with Vince, and I slightly had this with Angelo as well. You know, there was seventeen hundred signatures against the car wash on Ford Road. Seventeen hundred signatures. And it sits on the corner of Kinmore and Ford Road. Almost every single person in Northern Dearborn Heights, between Inkster, Wilson, the Gully, Downs, signed that petition. They went to court, and the court saw that it met its requirements of the nine things. And then there was a lawsuit, the court ordered that this thing could happen, and then the city went into, into, into litigation. Moral of the story is, I want to hear, before I interrupt you, I want to hear from Mr. Deeb if these are the same nine requirements that the, that the court requested for this other development for the car wash was done. And if you don't mind, can you unmute, Mr. Deeb? Hi Angelo. Can you, uh, can you unmute George? George, I'm sorry, I called her Angelo. Or for, you can answer, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, yes, sir, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, so, um, one, one, to begin with, so we follow the zoning ordinance that's currently in effect. And the zoning ordinance have nine-point rezoning guidelines. And that is specified in Section thirty-six, five-twenty-three C. And if the question is, are those the same nine points that were used by the prior, whoever reviewed it for the car wash, it wasn't myself, but yes, the answer is yes. These are the nine-point guidelines that are specified in the current zoning ordinance which we follow for all our evaluations. So it isn't just the rezoning request, we follow the ordinance book for all of our reviews. So the answer is yes, sir, the same.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I, I had, that was a question that I may have
No problem, I, I understand, I understand your reasons for asking these things, and, you know, I, I don't mind that the, that the discussion was cut off there. But again, you know, even, even during that, that last planning commission meeting, there was members of the planning commission that were stating as fact that it did not meet the criteria, right? So we have a person who's deemed a professional to assess these things, saying it meets all the criteria, and a person who's not a professional, is not paid by the city to, to make that decision, saying it isn't consistent with the
Well, the planning commission members said that, and they do work for the plan, they work for this, you know, I would
I understand that.
Well, if they're saying it didn't, they, they actually do work for the city.
And I'm not saying that they don't work for the city, I'm saying that there is somebody who's responsible for it, who's to make that decision, right? So they're, 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 they're the responsible party for making that decision, whether or not it's, it's such. So some, one person's opinion is different than the, than the city engineer who's providing the formal response to those questions, right? And I, and I want to make sure that we stay with facts and data when doing this assessment, right? When we're doing this, this, this exercise over here. And, and I'm not necessarily prepared to put in front of the city council a formal rendering and things of that nature. Our intention has always been to clear rezoning before we go through with renders and things of that nature. But if you ask what the intent is, okay, I can speak to that, right? Our intention is to have a multifamily property there, we're not a hundred percent certain, certain if we want to go with condo or if we want to go with apartment, right? But regardless, the intention is to provide a, a, a housing that is deemed aesthetically at a high level, right? A mix of materials in there, a more of a modern look to it, you know, maybe similar to what's in the area right now, but with more, you know, more updated materials and things of that nature. We see, we see development happening in other places like Garden City, like Westland, things of this nature over here. And we're looking to make sure that we're doing something that's better than that, right? We recognize that we're in Dearborn Heights, we're in a nice area of Dearborn Heights, we're close to the golf course, aesthetics do matter. Right? And the other parts that are there are, are very complimentary to the, to the plan, right? I mean, Ann Arbor Trail is a high-capacity road. I know that there's concerns regarding when Heinz drives floods and things of that nature, but Ann Arbor Trail has capacity for, I think it's like ten thousand vehicles per day. It was compared, our, our property was compared to a similar request for rezoning that was on, um, what's west of Kinmore, one or two, one block of Kinmore, I believe it is.
Angelo?
What's it, I think, no, that's, I'm sorry, I said west, I meant east, and I think it was two blocks east after Gully.
Gully.
After Gully, what's after Gully?
Highland.
Highview.
Highview, I think it was Highview. So there was a request for rezoning for a property on Highview, and they compared the, like, on Highview between Ford Road and House. And they compared that, that, that quarter acre parcel to two and a quarter, two and a quarter acre parcel, like, they're, they're not even on the same level, and that was deemed a criteria for not, for not voting for the, uh, the recommendation by one of the council members. I mean, it's, it's not even comparing apples to oranges at that point, it's comparing apples to meat, it's not even in the same category of fruit at this point over here. So I just want to make sure that when we're having our discussions over here, that we keep it to facts. And I understand, everybody has an opinion, I have wants that doesn't necessarily translate to needs, right? And I want to make sure that we're assessing the needs of the city, okay, and the facts that are in front of us.
Yes, sir, yeah, thank you, Councilor. Mr. Neda, thank you very much for being here today, and thank you for thinking for your next investment to be in Dearborn Heights. The only reason I asked for this to come to a study session because they gave us information on Thursday, there's not much, I went through the minutes, I mean, it's kind of confusing. I, I, I wasn't, yeah, there's a lot of material, I wasn't at the, the planning commission meeting, and, uh, and it was Memorial Weekend, so it was hard to get hold of anybody. And just for the, out of fairness to all the people, it was gonna take a good hour to discuss, and it's not perfect to people at the council meeting, so that was the only reason. And for me to make a decision, we needed more information.
Understood.
So thank you for being here today again, and, uh,
And so just apologize for the, like, lack of preparation, my intention, if I had known, if I had more time to prepare, if I had known, I don't know how I missed the communication, I'm not even sure if it was sent to me or not. But, you know, I would have come prepared with a slide deck or things of that nature, so I apologize for that.
No, no problem. So, um, if you think about condos or apartments, which is gonna be, you said, two levels, either town home, townhomes or condos. So, like, which way do you think it's gonna be built on the property? Are you gonna have, like, two buildings on each side and a, and a street in between?
So, so we did, um, we did some, um, uh, schematic drawings during the due diligence period prior to purchase of the property, and I engaged with the consultant at that time. And we have, we have a handful of renderings and options and things of that nature, right? But the one that seems, um, you know, cost-efficient and aesthetically beneficial and things of that nature, right? Is probably having separate buildings that are shaped in a U around an entrance to the property, right? Like, that's what, that's what looks like it's, uh, it's the most likely occurrence, right? I mean, you know, but if whether a building is positioned north-south, or whether a position, a building is, is positioned east-west, there's so much frontage available, there's so much land available, there's so many opportunities and options for uh, placing parking and waste disposal and sewer lines and things of that nature, that we've got a lot of flexibility, right? I mean, there is, there is a lot of flexibility there, and of course, the intention is to come back to the city, to the planning commission, to ensure that what we're doing, you know, meets the requirements, provides an aesthetic benefit to the city, provides a functional benefits to the city, and also provides a financial benefit to the city, right? And an increase in revenue from tax dollars, an increase in business revenue from participation in consumer, uh, uh, increase in number of consumers in the, in the area. These are all good things that need to be considered when you guys are making your decision as well.
I, I mean, to balance it, it all, all sounds good, the only concern that I had, and I had discussion with Rick today about it, and I think he probably could go over it. I think you're gonna have some, um, well, once you build, you need to have some kind of irrigation for the water, correct?
That, we, we've considered that, and actually, our architect, our architect told us that when, that we either have, you need to ensure that we've got a water detention or a water retention system. Forgive me, I don't know which one it is, uh, the, 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 the language is, the wording is very similar, and I just forget which one.
As long as you're aware.
We, we are aware of that, and we have, you know, we have some, you know, drawn-on-a-napkin type of estimates that we've put together that, uh, that, you know, kind of check the box in terms of what the, what's budgeted for that.
Rick, can I hear from you a little bit on this project and your thoughts? Rick Wallin, our building and engineering director, has been with the city for thirty-plus years.
If you look at the zoning map, everything around this property is R M R N. And when he first bought it, we thought it was in the R M. And it misses right at Columbia. So, I mean.
So, Mike, uh, Council Chair. The question to you is, you know, I, I've seen this property, I've looked at, uh, pictures over the years on it with water and stuff. Is it designated as a wetland, do you know?
No, there used to be a house there, and where the big hole is in the middle, I think that's where everything's just kind of sunk. Because it's like a pond right in the middle of the, the lot.
Hang on, let the councilman finish.
That's it, that's the only question I have.
Hang on, go ahead, Councilman.
Also, the previous house had a basement that wasn't building properly?
Well, it could have had a basement, and then when they fill it in, it'll still, you know, sink after years, you know? No, I'm sure it's gone, but it's just when it got filled back in, it's probably just something.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, I just want to revert back
Speak, speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, I, I just want to go back to what I said earlier, I mean, I was trying to suppress the, the additional discussions that may come up about the wetlands. Again, I don't have the documentation in front of me saying one way or another, but the Commissioner Turfee indicated on the record that he reviewed the Michigan, uh, 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 D N R, and I'm, I'm using D N R
Michigan National Wetland Authority.
Yeah, he, he confirmed, he confirmed that it is not wetlands, so that, that really shouldn't be a, a
But just, uh, you know, the due diligence falls on you, not on the commission, not on the city, it falls on you, and if it's something that's requested, it falls on you.
It has not been formally requested from me.
Uh, we asked, I mean, I understand that, um, a commissioner might say that to you with all respect, but I, until I see something from that I'm, I'm asking, to be honest with you, I don't take it, just like you said, everybody has an opinion and their wants and needs, and I had some residents that were concerned about that, and that's the only reason I'm asking.
And that's not a problem, I understand, and if, and if, and if, and if that's the case, then I just ask that we assess it based off of facts and not on an opinion, so if there's any ambiguity, if we think that, hey, it may be one way or another, then we should wait until that information is clearly presented, indicating as such, and not make decisions based off of, well, this person said this and that person said that, but they'll ask.
Nobody's here to make a decision today, what it is, is that we're asking from a city official, and knows this, I'm asking them directly, nobody's here to make a decision regarding that, what it is, is a question that was raised by a bunch of residents, and I'm clarifying it for you, that's all it is.
The question has been received, and I, like I said, I, we will do our part to ensure that we've got clarity on that. Um, I do want to put out there that during the period of due diligence, um, we did do soil testing. I don't have those records available right now, uh, but we did do soil testing during the period of due diligence, and we confirmed that the soil is suitable for construction. So, and that was, I mean, that was a, a, a go-no-go indicator at the time, I actually told Rick about it when we did it, so.
And, and it is not in our wetlands, man.
I mean, again, I think the councilman here is just saying, because the, again, let's go, we want to use, we're, we're using the word perception, because the perception is, it's, there's water there, and so it could be a wetland. So a lot of the people that live in there, and that's okay, they're, they're scared, and it's okay to be scared, and, and somebody, they just, someone needs to hear reassurance from the experts. And so if you get some type of survey or something stating, hey, this is not a wetland, and it can be submitted, and to show people that live in the area, I could tell you right now, there are, there's new businesses that happen open down on Ford Road, I live across the street. We never saw flooding until these new businesses came around, so it's like, people are afraid. You know, I'm not saying that it is going to cause some type of flooding, but, look, what we're trying to do here, and I think we've learned from the past, is that if something's gonna happen, we just want to make sure we're dotting our i's, we're crossing our t's, and we're not just saying, sure, go do whatever you want, and I'm not saying that that's what's happening today, because you can tell, it's not what's happening today.
So, and I want to add to that, prior to purchasing the property, I was working with a, a realtor, and we didn't close on the property for ninety days because I had an engineering company come out there and do the soil sampling, and he said something similar to what you said, there was a structure here. The structure's no longer there, and that's why there's, there, there's a hole there, there was no water at the time, it was in the summertime. But I didn't close on the property for ninety days after we did our due diligence.
Sorry, guys, nothing from the audience, but I have these site chats inside, please, if you do, we can have them outside, thank you.
That's all I wanted to say, is that we did our due diligence, we had an engineering company come out there prior to me closing on the property, I wasn't gonna close on the property after, because we did hear, you know, could be wetland, it could be this, so we did our due diligence, closed on the property, and the engineering company from Detroit at the time said there was a structure on the property, but it was not a gas station, and that's what we confirmed.
And you can see exactly where this structure is.
Council Chair, I just want to put, I'm not, I'm not against this project. I believe that our development should happen there, and I believe in all developments in our city. It's just there are certain, you know, certain concerns and criterias that come that we're asking, it's fair, and, I mean, believe me, anybody that buys a property, you're not buying it to look at it, so.
A hundred percent, and I wanted to share that we could possibly be living there. We're here, we're, we live in Dearborn Heights, full-time right now, eventually it will be part-time, and we could possibly be living there. So we're not gonna build anything that we wouldn't want to be in, to be honest, we have a second property that we're always out at. Once our kids are done school, we will not be in the area other than here and there, and that's where we'll live. So if it's good enough for us, I would, we have high standards, I think it'd be good enough for a lot of people, just wanted to add that.
All right, Rick, Councilor. Yeah, Rick, I want to ask you, so how does this process work? So if we approve this, does it go to the zoning board or we just approve it to the rezoned right away?
Well, it'll be approved to be rezoned, and then once he gets his drawings done and everything, it'll go back to planning commission for a site plan approval.
And then What about the zoning board? There's no zoning board? I thought there's
It matters how he uh, draws it, so if he needs any variances, he may have to go to zoning, but he might not need any of that.
So how come the zoning board doesn't look at stuff like this before it comes to us, it doesn't have a variant?
Because they, they give variances, so, you know, if you need ten feet, you only have nine, they could give you that one-foot variance, you know, the
But they don't work on, like, rezoned it, though.
Right.
I'd love to hear from anybody from the audience, anybody who wants to step up. Vince, I know you said yesterday an additional minute or two.
No, the study session. We're gonna give you three minutes.
Hopefully I won't take that long. It's a little rough breathing today because of all the wildfires, uh, Druckowski, Columbia Street, Wayne County. My concern is, is, you know, how it has been presented without an actual visual detail of what's gonna happen there. I understand that the city is advancing, that, that the lot will never, uh, stay a lot, I understand that. Um, but I can give you some history on that area. My wife was born in that house that we live in presently, and I'm not gonna tell you her age, because she'd probably beat me up. Um, but I remember as a kid, when I lived in the area, it was all farmland. So that could have been possibly a barn, or a hay shelter, or anything, something like that. Because across the street where the newer condos are now, was a barn, a hay field, and cornfield. So that I know, or fact. Well, they could have had a, uh, probably, yeah. Um, so, I thought that entire area was all farm. It was like a lot of areas were all farm at once. Um, so it seems to me that the process is somewhat a little backwards, you know, on how, I mean, if you don't have a drawing or a rough idea of what you're imagining, um, and you present it, and how are we supposed to, as residents, say, oh, that looks great, or, uh, it doesn't look great? So that's one of my major concerns.
Yeah.
I was just timing real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Vince, with respect to you, if, you know, if I'm gonna use my, as example, as my, myself, I decide to build a house the way I want it, as long as I meet the variance, to be honest with you, it doesn't, as long as I meet the variance, it's really not up to anybody how, um, a structure looks like, as long as I meet all the variances. You know, that's an opinion.
Yeah.
But if it's, and I'm building for me, something for me.
Right, that's for you.
So, if, as long as they meet the variances and they're within the guideline of the variances of the city and the building code, it's really, it's up to them what they choose, colors, windows, whatever, as long as it's within the variance of what the city
Yeah, they're gonna live in it, no.
Right, so that's, and, and that's what I'm saying for that, and, and, and to, and, you know, and to their aspect of things, why would they go spend money, make all these drawings that we may not go approve?
Right.
It's, the process isn't that, it's just, it's a formal process to start to work, you can't go out and say, I'm gonna build hypothetically a gas station, and you come in and say, no, you can only build homes there, why would I go spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars on drawings for no reason?
Right. Okay. So I was, I was just gonna kind of piggyback on that, and, you know, I know you want to visualize it, truth is
Because I'm a visual person.
Yeah, and so am I, and so am I, and so, guys, and, and, come in, Vince had this conversation, we had a very good candid conversation today. And it was more so him just saying, like, one, wants to make sure that it's not flooding the neighbors, uh, and that it's not putting your guys, you know, and anybody in jeopardy. Number two, second thing is, um, uh, that, that him and I had was, he's lived there all his life, he just wants to know what it's gonna be, and I explained to him, I said, Vince, they bought the land, not you. They bought it, if they want to go out and develop this and however they want to, and if they meet the requirements, it's on them. Uh, but, you know, you know, just you guys coming here and speaking, I mean, I would love to be able to see some type of presentation if you guys had that opportunity, show the city, and, you know, work with your neighbors and work with your, uh, uh, you, you know, the people that are living amongst this area, because you want good neighbors. You don't want people to standing out here and coming out and saying, man, we don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this, at every single meeting. Man, I would personally love to see, like, as there's gonna be a playscape, or if, if there are children in the area, is there going to be some type of greenery to be able to block up some of the neighbors that stay adjacent with it? You know, I mean, these are questions that, like, maybe me, I mean, you know, Rick and the residents can have, but I think people want to see, look, I'm gonna call it for what it is. Nobody wants to see what's happening on Cherry Hill next to the old seven-eleven. A bunch of apartments into people's backyards, thing, weeds growing out, things looking trash. How about this, forget the residents that live in the area, I don't want that. I don't want it. Um, and so, it seems like you guys care, and you guys want to do good things. I mean, if, if, and then that would be in the kindness of you guys, and in no way, shape, or form do you have to give us any renderings. Obviously, you just have to give your plans to the building department, but we would love that you could have this working relationship with us, especially since you guys are residents. You can only imagine, you're somebody that opposed the car wash. I mean, you, you guys opposed it on Ford Road, the courts ordered over what you guys said, you know, I remember you guys coming in and being very vocal The courts ordered over what you guys said, you know, I remember you guys coming in and being very vocal about it. It was our reverse today and here, here we are, you know. But the reality is this, if you don't mind, maybe give out some like rendering if you could. Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, I just one quick question. I didn't hear you cuz we're, you were talking about the, uh, reservoir. The water holding.
Water detention.
Retention. Retention. Was there gonna be a retention basin or retention pond? Pond, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vince.
So I'll answer Vince's question first, um, about, about water management, um. It is absolutely considered. I don't wanna say, hey, it's gonna be retention or detention or whatever it is. We've engaged with the engineer. They've told us that it's a requirement and we would be compliant with that. I can't say what it is. I'm not a, I'm not a civil engineer. I'm not a structural engineer. I can't speak to what it is, but whatever the requirements are, in order to ensure that we don't have runoff. Uh, uh, causing issues downstream or wherever it may be, those, that will be addressed, okay? Um, and Mr. Baydun, in regards to, you know, what you had called out, I, I, I'll go back a little bit to what Councilman Sob had indicated saying, hey, you know. Can't go and spend X amount of dollars on, on what the future will be when we're not sure what the present is, right? Um, we're willing to participate, um, we're willing to do some things, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that there is. Um, uh, an approach that is measured, right? I mean, we've been going through this exercise for a long period of time. And we wanna make sure, um, you know, we wanna do what we can to promote our intended outcome. And I understand your request. We can put something together, but it won't be very formal because we don't wanna go to a point where we're spending, you know. Tens of thousands of dollars for, for, for drawings and renderings when we're not sure what the outcome is going to be. As we saw, said, that's typically an outcome, that's typically a, a next step in the process, or as he alluded to. Um, but I, I've said it before in regards to what our intentions are, right? I mean, you know, whether it's two-story walk-ups or whether it's, uh, two-story apartment. I mean, we're looking to do something that's going to provide an aesthetic benefit for the city as well too. Um, and you know, you had mentioned, you know, greenery and playscapes, of course, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's how we would be able to. Uh, promote attraction to the apartment complex itself. I know that the city of Dearborn Heights is nowhere near their intended goal of three hundred something. Uh, apartment units being built, um, uh, uh, per their city plan. I know that there's some, there's been some. Uh, movement toward that, but I don't even think we've knocked out, you know, a third of that. Uh, uh, so. You know, there's definitely opportunity for it, I think overall, to buy something good for the city. If you guys. Are, are, are patient, then we can try to come up with some kinda casual rendering. And I'll, and I'll stress it as a casual rendering because. We don't wanna invest into the, to, to, those, those, those soft costs prematurely.
No, and I think a lot of AI things out there today, you can break them down. It's.
Yeah.
I think Adam in the audience here probably can do it for, like, on for free. He's like an IT guru. Um, but, but the reality is, I think just some type of visual, and, and, and maybe that should be a criteria now.
Perhaps it should be, I mean.
You know, and I know it's not, but maybe, maybe some adjustments need to be made because like.
But, but, again, it's one of those things where you gotta balancing act, right? If you do it right, you know, a project of this size, I mean, our, our, our. Pre-construction costs are gonna be a six-figure cost, right? And a, a big chunk of that is going to be in the drawings. In the drawings, right? So I mean, to, to, to jump ahead like that, um, formally, it's just, it's just not in the cards right now, but in a casual approach. If the city is willing to accept something that's very, or, I shouldn't even say the city, but if, if the people here are willing to accept something that's a little bit casual and non-formal, we can put something together.
Sure. Council chair? Yep. Thank you. Um, I have three things, um, I, I'm wondering why that building was torn down that was there originally. Was there an issue with flooding or just it was old or burned down or?
It was before.
I mean, how old was it? I mean, it's been that, it's been that long and it's still settling? Or is there's a water problem still?
Nobody has done anything in that.
Yeah.
Use of property on stuff.
Are, are, are you guys developers?
Uh, we are not professional formal developers, no. Uh, we've built, we've built a couple of homes. Uh, we have some construction experience, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't label us as form, formally as developers.
Do you have?
Not yet anyhow.
Do you have like an onboard in, engineer?
Point of order. Nothing from the audience.
Something you work with all the time or some?
Yes.
Where I'm getting at, maybe.
We do.
Maybe you can come up with, with some pictures of, of a very similar project.
We ha, we, again, we, we have pre-con, pre-purchase of the property. We have, uh, we had a consultant engage with us so that we can confirm density, so that we do our financial projections. I mean, really, that was the intent of the drawings that we had, just to confirm, you know, what the, uh, the property had. Uh, a capacity for, and I don't, I, I don't like using the word capacity, but just what would be feasible for the pro, for the property. So I have some drawings, but I'll be honest with you, they're, they're, you know, those were dated, I mean, I, I, we bought this property five years ago. Those projects were probably from five years before that. The materials that are, that are represented on there, they may be new from ten years ago. But I don't know if that's the path that I would be going down right now. So I'm hesitant to present something like that to you. But I think we can come up with something casual and informal that we can work with the city, that we can work with the participants in.
Yeah, I'm sure you wanna put as much as you possibly can legally on that site, and, and stay within, stay within.
Not necessarily. There's financial concerns as well too. I have to, I have to build what I can afford.
Yeah.
Right? So it's not just, it's not just build what it has capacity to, it's build what I can afford. And also build something that's attractive. I mean, if I can build thirty units that are gonna get X amount of dollars. Perhaps I can build twenty-five that are gonna get me, you know, one point four X and that's more beneficial for me.
Okay. Hey, Rick, uh, for the retention, detention, can they do the underground stuff like they do in the parking lots?
That's why we're just.
You speak off the mic, please, Rick.
That's why we're just here for the rezoning before he even knows what he's gonna do. Because it matters if he goes with condos, he just has to do sewers. If he goes with apartments, he'll have to do a pond or underground tanks. I mean, he could build two houses there bigger than any apartment building with no problem. And we couldn't say anything. So.
Is, um, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. Um, can you explain to me the difference between retention and detention? Uh, the, retention is, it retains the water and, and then, and then takes, gets rid of it later. And de, detention is it stays there, basically, and, you know, and goes, goes in the ground or something. Retention, detention, that's, um, that's it. Then one, one just holds a wire for shortly and that releases it. What does it get released to then? It's released, it's like into the store.
Goes into our sewer.
Oh, that's.
But it goes into us.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, that was my, I, I did have one question. Now, just, uh, theoretically, this, the, uh. The sewer system, uh, you know, the gas lines, uh, every utility is, cannot handle. More than one house, just say, just theoretically. Who, who pays to have all that, uh, upgraded?
They do.
They do.
They do? Every bit of it? Yeah?
Okay. If Edison needs to put a transformer on the pole, they, you know, the customer pays for it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, council chair. Thank you so much. Uh, anyone from the residents? Anyone, please state your name. Uh, you have two minutes.
Renee Murna, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights.
Your name, the city reside on the street that you live on. Sorry. I have to say the full.
Another routine.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, much better meeting than it was the last time we were here, you know. I don't know, you guys were gone when I made comments at the end of the meeting, but, um, it didn't leave me with a really good feeling. I understand that change has to happen in cities, like cities change. They're not always gonna be the mom and pop cities that we grew up with. They're, you know, things have to happen, more housing has to happen. I understand that they wanna develop in Dearborn Heights and that involves some rezoning and other things. I have a couple of questions, so. You said you had a couple of other properties. Have you had any problems with the residents when you were trying to build those or a, any, you know, prob, problems since then? With any problems with the residents?
Very small problem.
But nothing in Dearborn Heights? Okay, but do you have any problems with Dearborn Heights? One, one of the things is, when you mentioned that, um, there was a petition with seventeen thousand signatures. And it still went through, the car wash went through. It makes me realize, do the ci, citizens really have any choice? Or is this all just playing out until, until they get, everybody gets their approval of what they're gonna do? Because if they reach certain criteria, it's gonna pass regardless of what the residents think.
Well, well, the, the city has a statute of limitation that says, if you read, meet a certain requirement. If you say, this is what you need to do in order to build it, you meet them all and you still deny them, city is now then held responsible. So, but if they meet seven of the nine, the city can deny them saying you missed these two requirements. But if they meet all nine, you can't come up, so, yeah, and, and residents could buy it. You could, I mean, a different resident could have bought the land and said, I want nothing to do with it. Mind you, I'm not using this information because. Uh, the, the one attorney that spoke at the last meeting, uh, did something similar to this. And, you know, that was when he was delivering his message, this is what he was saying.
Okay, and the thing, the thing about the car wash, it just, it was a great visual of the fact that. The citizens really have no power if, if whoever made those nine criteria, one of the criteria is. If, if the majority of the citizens are against it, the answer is no, that should have been criteria number ten. So not nine, should have been criteria ten, because that puts the citizen at zero. You know, if they jump through these hoops or, or supposedly jump through these hoops, so that, that's fine. The other part is, when you were saying that that place by seven eleven got, you know, got developed and then there's been nothing but problems, where's the follow-up? Where was the, where was the ticketing on the grass or on, so they can build and then just do whatever they want? I'm not saying that the, these folks would do it, but if, if the city's not following up on those, what's, what's to say they're gonna follow up on anything they're asking here? Even with the flooding area. And, and one more thing is if, so right now, everybody says, oh yeah, it's not a flood zone. Well, that's what they said about the fire station, is that not correct? Did they say the original fire station was not a flood zone?
No, it's not a flood zone. It was just on a certain land and they didn't do proper testing to see if you can actually build on it. They assume, because it was, it was. A non-flood zone area that you can, right?
No.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a flood zone.
No, the fire station where it's at right now, just the material that was put in the ground is actually banned federally and expands. When water, when it gets contact with water.
Yeah.
The structure itself, the foundation walls itself are solid in the building. The partition walls inside, because it sits on a slab, are moving around. As the material inside the property is expanding.
But what I'm saying is something was approved then and saying, oh yeah, it's good, it's good to go. And then later on, maybe it was unforeseen, you know?
No, no, no. The building was approved perfectly fine. The contractor that backfilled the property in, used material that's banned to use.
Okay.
And that's what happened. And we found, we found twenty-five years later, this is what's happening.
Right. And, and that's what I'm saying is that things can be passed and you don't find out till later that, hey, that really wasn't the truth. And, and, and I understand that you said you got an email from, from Commissioner Turfy. But it's still hearsay in the meeting. Like, he's not here to say, yes, I did my research, here's my research. It would be good if Commissioner Turfy was here, because otherwise, that's hearsay. That's a third-party, you know, opinion. And, and I know he can, he can say, hey, here's the email from that, but it's still third-party.
Yeah.
Just some of those things that just make me wanna know where is the power of the people.
Thank you.
You know, but not that I don't welcome them and to do what they have to do, just, just to make sure they do it with, with the citizens.
Council chair.
Answer that question?
Yes.
I have, I just wanna follow up on a few things. Again, um, I was asking them what they own in the city or what they do is irrelevant to this project. And it's not fair to judge them based on other projects or the properties they have. We're here for this direct project on, uh, on Arbor Trail. I'm sorry. Right, but it's, again, it's, it's, if, if I have a house and it's my own property, it's really no one's business what I do. On that property as long as it meets the criterias. Now, if we wanna set new criterias, based on opinions, it's, that's not governed. Right, so the gov, this, the city, they do meet the nine criterias. And that's been, that's been made very clear by our expert city engineer, that does our infrastructure work and everything. Residents had certain, you know, certain concerns about wetlands and stuff, and they emailed us and called us and asked, and we asked honest question. Now, he should have came prepared, you said. If his engineer was here, his engineer would have been prepared. It's, when somebody's building something, they don't have every single answer because they hire professionals to do it. And in order for, again, he stated, and I'm going back to where he said, I'm in this, I'm in this field of line of work, by develop. And you can't work backwards by going saying, here, I'm gonna build, and again, I'm gonna use, I'm sorry, and hypothetically, I'm gonna build apartments here. But I know the zoning only allows, uh, just a home. Uh, why would I spend the money when I, before I know it's gonna get rezoned? So if he gets his rezoned, they're gonna have to go, they're gonna have to submit infrastructure plans. They're gonna have to submit either detention or retention, uh, plan. They're gonna have to meet every variance by code that the city allows, height variances and everything else. And then it's gonna come back to the city for approval. Now, uh, and again, back to Vince, I can, Vince said, well, what is it gonna look like? How's it gonna look like? And again, that falls, it's not up to the residents to decide. Huh?
Or the city council.
Or the city council decide what something's gonna look like, the city, or, if I wanna build a home that's this skinny to. Have my neighbor be upset with me cuz the house is this skinny just to block his view and I meet the nine criterias, you can't stop me from building. Because then they'll boast to us, we'll be in violation of the Fair Housing Act. Because I own the property. If you had an issue with me buying the property, you should have bought it. That's what it's gonna fall down to. And I was on the commission when the car wash got built. The judge said exact words in his, uh, motion that he sent to us. You either build it with no conditions. Or, or I, we allow it to be built with no conditions. Or the commission approves it with conditions. It was gonna get approved regardless. Why? Cuz they met the nine criteria, but it was based on emotions. That the residents were not happy with it, but unfortunately, the property itself fell in that criteria. I don't agree with their business, to be honest with you, cuz of traffic. But unfortunately, the law is the law. And we gotta follow the law and rules. Correct, but I'm, but it's part of the charter and the, and the citizens themselves approved that charter. And yes, I, I agree with you absolutely. Some updating needs to be done and revisions need to be done and a commission needs to be put. But currently, right now, the steps and process is in place. We're, we're following the charter and the process and procedures.
Alright guys, that's, we gotta wrap this part up here.
Council chair?
Yep, hold on one second. I'm gonna hear from anything else from any of the audience. Okay, before you start, I wanna hear from Councilman once in a row. Okay, real quick, you know, um, the, 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 uh. The phrase that we've been hearing a hu, a hundred times today, and I don't think anyone knows exactly what it is, is the nine points of criteria. I mean, I, does anybody know what the nine?
No.
I'm sure, maybe Rick does, but I don't know. Judging this project.
They are in the backup from last time.
One.
Yes, yeah, they are in the backup from last time.
They are, all nine of them, all nine in the backup, yes.
The question, they're answered by Mr. Deep, I think.
You should go back to it, through the planning commission, because there were some, there were some, like, it wasn't facts. It was just like, well, it can go this way, it can go that way. So maybe you should go through the nine.
I'm gonna have you start. Just state your name, the city reside and the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Uh, Nadia Kent, Ann Arbor Trail, Dearborn Heights. I live right across the street. I have pictures too, if you wanna see like how it looks right now. Um, for, for the developers, they wanna build on it, which is fine. I mean, we, we want it built on. I'd like it. To start, stay in R1, just like, um, the city paid almost five hundred thousand dollars to do weight and trim. That master city plan, are you familiar with it? Did that come up in any of this? Because it's very clear, and I've gone, I've done some research on it, it's very clear that that parcel. Through weight and trim was, uh, to stay in R1. And that was the best, for the best of the city.
I'm sorry, I wanna pause you real quick. You said you, 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 you saw a city master plan?
Online, the weight and trim, they have a website.
Even out yet.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a little old, but it's, it's, there is some information on it. And you, and from the planning commission, they spoke about it, Mr. Turfy.
Yeah, so I want you to know that we actually, we've been asking for about almost five years for a, uh, for a master plan. We wouldn't be in this position today had we had a master plan. But we still don't have a master plan. So that master plan that you're looking is actually from two thousand and one. It was renewed in two thousand and seven, just like certain code.
So it's cert.
It's actually might even be from like nineteen ninety-five.
I thought I saw it twenty nineteen.
Twenty, two thousand and seven was the last renewal.
Okay.
Uh, but all, all they've done was, and if they do, you do see a renewal, they're just renewing the codes. Um, but we don't have any other master plan.
Okay.
Since like two thousand and one.
Well, there was a, a discussion about it. I didn't know if you spoke about it, cuz I wasn't here last meeting.
The money to, I'm sorry.
Did they pick a company?
Nothing.
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 Well, either way, the, right now, I mean, the, the area looks horrible. I don't know, you know, you're, you're gonna put all this money on it, who's gonna take care of that area? Who, after the, it's built, whatever it's gonna be built, I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna be apartments. It could be whatever they want. I mean, they could tell me time and time, we wanna do this, we want condos, we want townhouses, but they. Could put section eight, they could put an apartment, but, once you guys change the zoning, they could put whatever they want there, right? Is that true?
No, they'd have to go from the pla, if we rezone it.
Right.
And they set up, they would have to go back before the planning commission. Once they go before the planning commission, now they have sites. Then once the planning commission approves them, they come back to the city council. City council then has to come from the final review.
Cause that's not what it was said at the planning.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. This is coming, and especially something like this, like, if you could take this to the bank on record, this is going for the planning commission. Like I can tell you right now, you wanna add section eight right here, you're getting a no vote from Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, for, for mayor. Yeah, I mean, for, for mayor, but either way, also, I.
Discriminate section eight. You can't discriminate on that?
I don't think so.
Okay, but, but there are other, there are other, can you? Okay, there are other things to look at, and I don't know if you've looked at this, increased traffic flow and congestion, there's already so much congestion in that area. My kids take a bus, there's no, there's no uh police officers, there's no, there's no, this is speed. That's gonna add, and this is coming from my husband, John over here had sent messages, emails to everyone about facts. We talk about facts, these are all facts, about speed, um, about lack of sidewalks, about crime rates with multifamily homes, uh strains on local resources. Um, he brought up uh economical, like, this is what he can afford. He can afford this, but we can't afford the R one, so we have to also look at that aspect too. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna, tho- those people around there are gonna move out. You have nice family neighborhoods and uh people that live in those houses, they're gonna move. Your, your, the Dearborn Heights is just, it's, you're gonna lose a lot of good people, I think, doing that. And if you wanna see the property, have you seen it?
I've seen it today, I went, I went by it today, I don't know what you're talking about, but. No, come on, no, I was there today, I have a picture, I have a picture from today, from earlier today.
Thank you for having me.
I mean, I just passed by it today, like, two hours ago, you said six feet, you said six feet. All right, guys, Councilman, can you, can you uh text it to him?
Yeah.
Thank you. And by the way, you don't have to respond?
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and I, to be honest, I, I don't wanna make this into a back and forth.
No, no problem, I, I thought that uh 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 Councilman Ahmed had, had pointed at me saying, hey, did you wanna answer that? So I wasn't sure what the question was referring to, that's why I got up and then I saw him walk out over there. Um, I'm not sure if anybody else has any other questions for me.
No, I would like to hear from anyone else in the audience. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
I, I only need two minutes, Sue Astor, I live on Columbia, and my backyard, my fence line is the field. Um, I think from the first get-go of the meetings that we started having, I think they started out poorly. Um, because when the, the builders originally came up, it was what's being built? One gentleman said condos, somebody said condos or apartments, and it was, well, what difference doesn't make, it makes a difference. I'm not opposed, if I live, I've lived there for, I don't know, twelve, thirteen years now, um, and my uncle and aunt built their house there fifty and fifty-four.
Yeah.
So I think anybody is a fool to think that it was never going to be built on, okay? I'm not opposed to it being built on, would I prefer single level, single family homes? Absolutely. Would I prefer not some monstrosity? Absolutely. Can I live with a condo? Sure. What I don't wanna see is an apartment building, the folks, and not, people aren't bad, not everybody's bad. Apartments are transient folks, they're typically not there forever in a day, okay? And that's not everybody, I have friends that live in apartments, it's not what I'm saying, but I would like to see a more stable um, family, individual, whoever, come into the community. I'd like it to see it more aesthetically like the area, I don't want this square building like they built on uh, where's that, uh Warren and across from the golf course.
Can I pause you real quick?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
What a day, huh? What a day, I will tell you this, and this is just some food for thought now that I'm thinking, what if it was like a senior housing living?
That would be outstanding.
What if you did three senior housing living, because you have a ton of seniors that are wanting to live in the city of Dearborn Heights?
On a single, on a single.
Well, I mean, even if it wasn't.
Even if, but I mean, I, I'm fifty-six years old, I would love my laundry on the first floor. Um, they built the condos down uh Inkster, Ann Arbor, no, on Ann Arbor Trail, and uh it's Westland, but it's Farmington. Those, I, I really, I really like those, I mean, I am not opposed to building, but I am concerned about the water. They just put a new power pole in the corner of my yard, they went down three feet and they had about three feet of water in it. You know, my backyard gets a little mushy every spring, you know, it's not creeping up to my house, but there's concern. There's a, there's a, uh, what's that thing, a sewer, right on the corner, it doesn't drain. You know, though, for someone who lives right up against it, it's a concern, you know? But again, I'm not opposed, I just, I truly don't want an apartment.
You just wanna feel safe.
I do, I don't, I, you look at the apartment building that's at the corner of An- Ann Arbor Trail and uh Inkster, like, on the other side of the dock, that place looks like a piece of crap. It's, 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 you got the dumpster, you got garbage thrown everywhere, I don't wanna live by that.
And, and I think, I think this is a great healthy discussion, but we also can't jump to the conclusion saying that these new developers are going to do that.
No, I, and I'm, that's not what I'm saying.
And I don't think you are.
I, I am not saying that, and I, and I think wh- when we first started this, the, the, the very first meeting it came up is like, did you ever talk to the neighbors? And at that point, it was a little off-putting, because the answer was, is, well, I talked to the people at the church. People don't live at a church, Congress gets go to a church and they may buy the properties that you build, cool. But people don't live at a church, they live there, these people live there. And if you wanted, and one of the council members said, uh, or committee member said, oh, well, you should have a dialogue, I don't wanna build there. They do, and I'm not putting it on you and saying, oh, you're terrible, it's not what I'm saying. But to really get buy-in from everybody who lives there, we're the people who need to be engaged, and I can't tell you what to build. And I don't wanna tell you what to build, I just, I like my neighborhood, I like my house. You know, I like the field, but if you have to build, you build, you know, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you so much, anyone else?
Yeah. So, Councilman Bedu, um, you know, that would be an ideal situation if we could have the, if I had the resources, the know-how, the understanding, uh, be it the logistics of it, the operations part of it, in order to execute and promote a senior citizens, uh, a whole, an area intended for senior citizens. It's actually a personal dream of mine that, we've been discussing since, I, I used to, I was born and raised in Windsor, Ontario, um, and, and, and the, the, the uh uh, I am, the, the ethnic community that I'm part of, uh, always, there's always dialogue as we were growing up, concerned for our parents and wanting to ensure that there is a place for them as well too. I would love to do that, uh, there's some hurdles that need to be cleared, uh, financially, uh, 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 a knowledge, a knowledge base that just isn't there right now, um, but if the city's got resources to promote something along designs, we'd be all ears to, to discuss that, right?
They have like a two, a two or three-year waiting list to go into one of our senior homes in Dearborn Heights.
Maybe that's something that we need to be talking with you guys about, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna be, my wife had mentioned that, that we've got, we've had construction projects in Howell. Um, and uh, uh, we didn't have to go through any of the loops and, and, and hurdles that we're going through here, because we didn't have to go through any type of rezoning. Uh, but when we were talking to our builder, who's actually on the uh, uh, the zoning board over there, uh, and we presented to him the, the, this project over here and just looking for feedback from him, um, and we'd engage with him um, after we had our meetings with the planning commission, and hi- hi- his jaw dropped when we told him what the outcomes of that were. He, he had indicated to us that if this was happening in, in Howell, you know, they'd be trying to find ways to promote this happening and to try to find grants and, and promote the funding, figure out ways to help the developer in order to get this executed. I'll, I'll go back to, and, and again, this is all very casual discussion, right, and everybody's got opinions over here, and I always say, hey, let's stick to facts. I wanna just put out one matter of opinion, though, um, we've got, uh, uh, we, we have acquaintances and friends who are uh, on city council in Garden City. Also, when we told them about this project, they said, hey, Ben, that would, that would not be a challenge in Garden City, because we want these things to happen over here. We're trying to promote, we're trying to promote better land utilization, we're trying to promote better.
This, I know.
Better, better, better residencies, and.
I, I, and I, I just wanna respond to you on that one, and I'm so sorry to come off, uh, come off this way. Dearborn Heights, in, in, in many areas that surround the creek, you tend to see a lot of flooding. So in Dearborn Heights, you gotta remember something, we're, we're very sensitive to, to, to things, because, you know, people don't, uh, they're afraid of flooding, you know, anytime it rains, or it, it just rains at all. Channel seven is out there with its drone showing Dearborn Heights, and so like, Howell, you might not see that, Garden City might be a lot of, a little bit more raised, so you're not seeing that. And so, you can understand that, like, look.
Yeah, of course.
At the end of the day, I think residents voicing the concern, that's not out of a spiteful way, or saying, no, we don't want you to be an investor. I think it's more so of saying, we just wanna feel safe, feel acceptable in what's happening, and I think it goes, again, I use the word perception. Perception is, you know, can this be an eyesore, the perception, and if it is, we can't control that. However, if is it going to flood my backyard, is it gonna flood our basements? Then that becomes an issue where like cities like, hey, I need to engage in this.
I genuinely hope that when the discussion was initiated, that I was, I, I, I kinda jumped into the, to, 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 to use the wording that was presented to me in terms of retention and detention, and the need to ensure that that was there. Again, I'm not, I'm not a professional developer, I'm not a civil engineer, that didn't come up because of a casual discussion with anybody. It was part of the initial planning that we had, right, like the, again, the on, written on a napkin type of budgeting and all that type of stuff. It was definitely part of it, and I wanna go back to, to, to um, uh, Mr. Wensel here, uh, Councilman Wensel, I apologize for giving you that. Uh, Councilman Wensel, you had asked if we had uh, a professional engineer as part of this, of course, we do. Uh, licensed engineer who participates in activities in the city regularly, uh, he was present with us at the last meeting that we had uh, with the planning commission, so I wanna make sure that your concerns about that are, are met. And when, you know, our work with him was, you know, kind of like a, uh, the, the exceeded, meeting the requirements for the planning commission, so.
Thank you, no problem, anyone else in the audience? How you doing, sir?
Good, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got two minutes. Sure, uh, my name's John Kent, I live on Ann Arbor Trail. I mean, I sent, I sent a letter, kinda detailed, uh, you know, all of, all of my opposition to it. I just wanted to kinda, I guess, reiter- reiterate that, that, um, of course, I'm opposed to it. Uh, again, like others have said, I'm not opposed to, to.
Because I like a little bit.
Oh, sorry, uh, I'm not opposed to them actually building on it, I, I'm fine with, you know, single family homes, just like a lot, I think a lot of people are. It's just I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see a change to a, to a, you know, multifamily, I mean, that's kind of the main thing, safety, there's a lot of different, um, a lot of different reasons, that, you know, people that live in that neighborhood are kind of against it. Uh, and again, it's nothing personal against the developers or anything like that, we just. Yeah, we live there, we, you know, we have to live there, I don't plan on leaving anytime soon, um, you know, I, I just I, I want the city, I want our area to, to remain kind of, again, just single family. It's, I think it's better for the, the whole area, I think everybody here, uh, or all of the, the people that live in the area are gonna be very dissatisfied if it does end up getting rezoned. Uh, again, uh, developing is fine, see, you could put ten single family homes there. I, I plotted it out myself very meticulously, because I thought about purchasing that land when it went up for sale, like three, four years ago. Uh, whatever it was, um, but again, uh, you know, if, if it does end up getting rezoned to uh, to multifamily, I just feel like you're gonna have a lot of unhappy people, I don't know about people moving and things like that, but the majority of the people that are, that are here, that live in the neighborhood are, are opposed to it, and I just, I guess I just wanted to kinda add my opposition to it. So.
Thank you, thank you, it's so kind, appreciate it, anyone else in the audience? How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Riley, and I live on Kenmore Street, I have my notes because I don't wanna forget anything. Originally, at the planning meetings, the people were talking about building condos and not apartments. Now, they're talking about possibly apartments, which you get a different type of people that, like the lady was saying, people move in and out all the time of apartments. Okay, I'm here not to oppose the development of the property on Ann Arbor Trail, but I am here to oppose the rezoning to multiple family dwellings. The parcel, knowing, the parcel was purchased knowing it was a single family zone. And single family homes can still be built, even though it isn't the original vision. Um, changing the zoning opens the door to any possibilities like apartments. And through a tentative plan supposedly is now in the works. The hearing is strictly to change the zoning, we're not here to approve what they're building. So there's no promise of what will ever go in there once it's rezoned. We only know that somewhere down the road, that may be changed also. We have too many condos and apartments in the area already. And I think that area north of Ann Arbor Trail should be kept conducive to what the neighborhood is, single families. That's what I have to say.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Under two minutes. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Zuhair Abdulhaq, three five four Rosemary. Uh, I am not against uh, building on that property, because any development in this city, it's good, it brings taxes. It brings more people, it helps our, our uh, schools too. But I hope from experience in this city for almost twenty and some years, listening to this city council, do not approve anything unless you have a solid commitment from the developer what he's going to do. So you do not have problems later on, that's all I have to say, and I wish him good luck.
All right, thank you, under a minute. You, go ahead, sir. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes, your time won't start till you start speaking.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I guess, I've lived in that area for forty years. And um, it's always been a question in my mind, why that property was never developed, always has been. I've been to the two meetings on the zoning regarding this, there were eight people on that commission, and there was a very vigorous discussion that probably exceeds a lot of the con- of the council's vigorous discussion on issues. When I heard these people talk, I haven't heard anybody say, no development, they're concerned with what it's gonna look like. There was one person on the commission that indicated that maybe it would be worthwhile for these folks to talk to those folks. That still doesn't seem to be happening, and I would encourage that. And since I've watched council meetings for the last forty years, I recall not too long ago that Ford Road Development was creating issues for that neighborhood behind it.
Talking about the car wash property?
No, it's the uh, all of the um, what do I wanna call it? The super uh, the super stores that, all of the little binky places that are along Ford Road.
Before those were actually built, our city engineer stopped them, Mr. Deep, and maybe he can speak on it, George, if you can unmute him. He made him build a, a detention or retention, one of the teams, and he actually stopped him, he made him put it underground.
Sure, I, I think he's referring to the whole Ford Road Development, where they used to be all houses and now they're all buildings.
Yeah, and that's, I'm, I'm talking about the same thing, Councilman.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. That's not what he's talking about.
Yep.
So anyway, I don't have a dog and a hunt, except the one I walk in the neighborhood all the time. I've enjoyed the neighborhood, it has been a wonderful neighborhood to live in. I have had any number of people move in and out along the area that I live in, along Ann Arbor Trail. And I've had unusually good luck, ending up with very excellent neighbors. I think that's what these people are asking for, they want some assurance that something's gonna be done to give them good neighbors.
Counselor Chair? Uh, Council, Councilwoman, and then I'll have Councilman, my Councilwoman.
Just a question, do you remember what was built on that property since she's been there so long?
That property has been, let me see, I moved in there in nineteen eighty-two, it was empty then.
Oh, yeah, Rick just said it's been empty since. It's just going by time to, to.
Yeah, there was a pyramid there at one time.
Been anything?
Yeah.
I went in for one of the first owners in that subdivision, and I got an original drawing, and there was nothing there related. Years ago, it's possible there was a farm, I don't think there were a lot of, there's a farmhouse.
Fifty years.
There's a farmhouse next to.
I should build another farm. I should build another farm. Can you imagine? Eggs are, eggs are great right now. Chickens, yeah. I mean, chickens selling.
Uh, my, um, just a, a couple of brief things. If you contact the commissioners or the, the planning commission, uh, I think you're gonna, there was a wide variety of opinions on that, in that group. And I think to get original, not filtered information from anybody, you might wanna talk to some of those people to see what their positions were. And I think there were a lot of legitimate positions both ways. This is just a matter that this has been a wonderful neighborhood. People wanna see it stay a wonder. I mean, it has been outstanding to live there.
Council chair, I just wanna knock with this young man's uh comments. So, again, I I I I hear and feel, and feel people's opinions, and and I respect everyone's opinion, but everybody's entitled to an opinion. And when we rezon something too, there's also, there's restrictions that we can put on that goes with it too. You're just not gonna go build an apartment at six or seven stories, for example, or you can have condos that are three stories high. There's, there will be restrictions. And before even, I mean, again, if something gets approved for them to move forward with the design process, it does not mean that they're approved on. So yes, there is ga- uh, there is give and take that, although they wanna build something, there's also restrictions on the city's end. And we can put restrictions.
Right.
But like you said, you can build condos, you can build one-story apartments, they're considered apartments, or you can build three-story condos. You know, there's, there's limitations to stuff also and restrictions that come with it. Just not here, we approve it, you can build whatever you want. It does not work. Anything going there, it doesn't work that way.
Well, again, I I live at the road from there, and I would just, I know these folks want to make some profit.
And and that's why.
Wants to have some tax dollars.
And I promise you one thing, and I'll say this to all the residents, when it does come and they finally does come back to us, and everybody's opinion will be taken into consideration, and certain restrictions will be put on it. This is not a free-all here. Go ahead. Anything's approved.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
You do provide a lot of interesting television.
They'll be ending soon.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna give you, you can come up. Okay, you can go for.
They said, once the zoning was changed, we had no control.
No, you don't. You don't.
Think they can do their opponent. Now you're saying their plans have to be true.
Well, everything has to go, no, no, everything, so it's not.
Let's, let, let Rick answer, but, again, Rick is gonna answer this too, but now when something's approved by us,
go ahead, here's where it doesn't go, start building. It doesn't work that way.
That's, that's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's definitely, no, no, there's structure there a little, to some degree.
So I don't know if you know this, but all the way around you is already RM. There's only a little spot right by Columbia that is not. So once it gets changed to RM, if it does, they still have to go through a whole nother site plan approval, the stormwater, the water, the sewage, everything. So that's why this is, you go first for the stone change, and then they have to, then they'll spend all the money and show you what you're gonna build. Well, you could easily buy that piece of property and rezone it to R one again, but it's.
Hey, council chair. Sir, um, real, real quickly, I I'd like to, people who talk about tax base, I I'd be interested to find out the difference if we had the maximum amount of homes, single-family homes built there, and how many, how much tax dollars we'd get from that, and if we had a multifamily saying, how, what are tax dollars? But is it something astronomical difference or hardly anything to even be concerned about, you know?
And I wouldn't know. I'd have to ask, like, the assessors.
Was at the last meeting and it was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars a, well, per year, what would taxes be on?
That's.
That made homes, though.
That's on the site, what they're trying to do, the assessor said, it'd be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
You could probably build, how many homes you think you could build on that property? Four?
Not really.
No, four, you could build. That's a pretty big, more than four. What do you think, Rick? No?
Probably about four.
Four? Quarter acre, yeah, four, four max?
I'll speak looking at Rick here, but we kinda did an assessment prior to purchase of the home in regards to whether or not we, how many legally, how many compliant individual parcels lots we could extract from them. Um, the 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 dimensionality of the property just doesn't suffice to do something like put a street down the middle and get homes on two sides. Um, the logistics, the cost of uh, uh, of of, you know, getting five versus four just doesn't pan out. So, uh, based on the width of the property and the minimum, the minimum, uh, the minimum dimensional requirements, uh, the assessment is four, four parcels.
You could build condos, more condos, join buildings.
But that, but that's exactly why we're here.
Single-family homes are just connected together, right?
Yeah, that's, uh, uh, so condos do require RM, and that's part of the discussion that we're here, so.
Okay, guys, I think we've, we've heard. If less is anyone else from the audience that hasn't spoken yet, um, I'm going to have some time remarks from councilmembers on, on this specifically. Does anyone have any remarks on this? Mr. Debe, do you have anything on this specifically? Can you unmute Mr. Debe?
Also, can you hear me?
Nothing from the audience, please.
Alright, so, um, I just wanted to point a couple of things, um, um, as, as, uh, wha- Mr. Watland had indicated, this is the step one. There will be extremely detailed review coming up if the uh, area is rezoned. Uh, things like the setback requirements, um, um, you know, um, the height of the project, uh, detention. You know, one of the most important things that we look at for every development, every development, including our own development, is impact of that development on our stormwater system. So this will be definitely included in the review. So yes, the developer will have to go before the planning commission once again. And then once the site plan is determined and engineering is is is, uh, completed, we will be looking at things like this. Conditions will be applied. Uh, uh, we will evaluate the impact on our storm system, um, our, our water sewers, uh, all of that stuff will be taken account. But again, we will do that after, um, um, the site has been rezoned. So that's just normal process.
Thank you, Mr. Debe.
Yes, sir. So I have, uh, a comment, council chairs on the phone. My closing comment says that, you know, sometimes people don't wanna see change in the community, and and it's unfortunate. Because every, no home is made to last forever, and no property is made to last a hundred years, to be honest, in the condition it's in. Um, for myself example, I bought a home, you know, I knew what I was buying, I was buying property. I knocked the house down, I rebuilt my home, but I built it to what I want it to be. It was a ranch. I just built a ranch. But, you know, we wanna see development coming in the city. Yes, we are working on the master plan, and the master plan does call for, you know, multi-use properties, multifamily properties and everything, and it's required, it's needed. Um, be honest with you, are some of our homes in the city, you know, cheapest one we can find is two, three hundred thousand dollars easily, so people can afford it. You gotta also have, you know, uh, affordable hu- affordable housing for people. And again, I'm not against any business or property developer coming in the city, but as long as it meets, you know, our standards, our guidelines and and what the area needs and and the wants of the area, afford it. But again, once we rezon's on, does not mean that we're gonna go ahead and just, go ahead, it's a free-for-all. No, it's not that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Again, just keep in mind, um, I think with the, the gentleman that spoke earlier, he, I mean, he hit the, yeah, right, he hit the hammer on the nail. I think you just need to have those conversations, and I think, but it needs to be, I feel the tension is so much. You guys need to kinda just like release it. I think Vince has already released some of the tension. And then you guys should all just kind of communicate with each other. I know this is, you know, a vision of yours that potentially you'd like to go live there after selling your house as your kids grow old and stuff, but um, uh, just, I think have the conversation, senior living, senior housing living. I I I am telling you, there is a huge demand, huge, huge demand for it.
So, I wanna be kinda formal, and I know that we said that this is kind of an informal proceeding, but I wanna be a little bit formal here, saying that 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 is an option that that we are more than willing to consider. Um, but there is hurdles to clear that, where if the city is willing to participate and promote, promote that, and 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 provide some aid and help on something like that, we are, we are game for that. And I mean, like, you're here, you're here. I mean, I'm 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 putting my hand up saying, yeah, that 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 is something that we are absolutely willing to consider. We'd love to, we'd love council to 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 push for that as well.
A nice, a nice walk-around for them to be able to do.
All, all, all those things could be considered, right? But I mean, if if the city is wel- the city is willing to 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 participate and promote that, and, you know, do what other municipalities are doing to promote similar development, then then we're game for that as well, too.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. And it looks like, I feel like today we had a good, clean discussion. Anything else from any other council member? Anything from anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, meeting's over. Thank you. Have a good night. Thanks.
Recording stopped.